Call the meeting in order, please. Town of Lee Right to Know Law Meeting Checklist. As Chairman of the Select Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with the Governor's and Senator's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for the electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneity, listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone. 1-64-TISH-558-8656, entering meeting ID 89275413158. Password 124855, or by entering the same information through zoom.us. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenowhampshire.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. D, adjourning the meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, and each member states their presence. Also, please state where there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the Right to Know Law. Mr. Bugby?
I'm here and there's nobody in the room.
Mr. Brown?
I'm here and there's nobody in the room.
Mr. Lacorice, I'm here and nobody else is in the room. Thank you very much. First order of business, Joff Carlton, Maximum Velocity. Are you there, Joff?
You're muted, Jeff.
Yeah, I got that. Thank you very much, Scott. I appreciate that.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, gentlemen. I was asked to come to talk about asking if I could use my lights over at Little River Park. We are done this Friday. I'd have to apologize to everybody on the meeting back in June 8th. I was under the understanding with that that I had permission to utilize the lights. I remember hearing that Mr. Brown had requested that the rules be the same for all organizations. I had made a suggestion that we not have the lights later than 8:00 PM, and I'm here to ask if I could use them until Friday, this Friday. Sorry, with Zoom on it, I can't pull up the calendar.
November 6th?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
November 6th is this Friday.
Yep.
Comments from the Board, please. Mr. Bugby?
I have no comments. The only thing was, we needed to see if they would ask permission to do it, so that was the only thing from the last meeting.
Mr. Brown?
I'm fine with it.
I am fine with it as well. Thank you, Joff. You have permission to operate until Friday.
Thank you, gentlemen. You have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Joff. Next order of business, Fire Chief, Scott Minnet.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, two years ago, we worked on James Farm, the fire pond, and we recently found out that with the drought, because we can see it, the overflow pipe for that pond is actually angled, it settled in the ground too much. So, we did get a quote from the company that worked on it. Their quote was $3,275. I talked to Steve, and I think that we can do it for $1,342.65. We gotta pump it down now. It's rained a couple times, so we can do the work. He set up the excavator already as soon as we get the approval to do this, so we're asking the Board if we can remove funds from the capo improvements plan to fix the overflow pipe.
Seems like a good idea to me, but let's see what the others say. Mr. Brown?
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
When you say you're gonna pump it down, where does the water go?
Just right where the overflow pipe goes, there's a stream next door, where the pipe goes, so we just flow it into that.
So, how do you replace the water? Wait for rain, or?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Bugby?
I assume there's no permitting that's required to do this?
Check with Karen, and she said no.
All right.
Karen?
I'm okay with it, I guess.
Karen? Yes?
Yes, I checked with Mark Jacobs, he's a soil scientist, and he said as long as you start in, it's just the pipe that's into the pond, we're fine. So, it's the first two lengths, he said we shouldn't have any issues.
Therefore, I move to approve the repairs to the James Farm Fire Pond overflow pipe with funding from the Fire Ponds and Sistern's Capital Reserve Fund. I want to give you some breathing space, Scott. I'm gonna bring it up to $1,500. It's our second.
Oh, I don't know. I was okay with 1342.65, but I guess, second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Brown, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Lacorice, yes. Motion carries. Anything else, Fire Chief?
No, thank you.
Next order of business, Karen Rossi, Fair Committee.
Good evening. So, historically, the fair has been looking to have an event that will tie people over from the daily activities to the dinner to keep them for the fireworks. So, what we thought of in the past was to have bingo. So, in order to have bingo, it would have to be done by a 501(c), a nonprofit registered, and the law allows for different classifications of 501(c)(3)'s to authorize it, but the town has to vote to allow to have bingo. So, I'm requesting that the Board allow this request to go on the warrant article, March 21 vote, to allow bingo at the town fair and other charitable organizations if they choose through the town.
In fact, you were moving in my question, I was wondering what the ramifications were. That means all other bodies can also have bingo events, correct?
Correct. Campgrounds can have it now, but it has to be done by a charitable, a campground can have it under the law, and we have several campgrounds in town, but in order for a nonprofit to have it in town, we have to vote to accept this RSA in town to allow bingo and Lucky, I think it's Lucky Seven Games. But the town can't host it, it has to be a nonprofit that hosts it.
So, who would host it?
And not any licensed nonprofit could host it. We were going to have Mary's Dogs, which is a local dog rescue, was going to do it this year, but as you know, COVID, we didn't have a fair, so any nonprofit that wishes to host it is welcome, you know, the Fair Committee has to approve it, but we just have to find a nonprofit, because the Fair Committee wants something for people to do to keep, get them there and keep them there for the dinner and for the fireworks, and just to make it a nice, longer day.
We can always have bingo in the Grange on weekly meetings, right?
Sure. If it's approved.
Just wondering. Comment from the Board?
I have some questions.
Please.
Karen, you spoke about bingo, but it also says in here, sale of Lucky Seven tickets. What is that?
That is the RSA. I assume Lucky Seven are scratch tickets, that's my assumption, because now the state of New Hampshire sells scratch tickets at the local stores, not the stores, so I don't, that came from the statute? That's the suggested wording?
This is how the warrant has to be worded for it to be on the ballot?
That's my understanding, yes. That wording comes directly from the statute.
And does there any need to be any, let's say, for instance, legislative body approves this and votes for it, do these particular entities have to come before the Board and seek permission like they have to do for raffles, or is it just, if they want to do it, they can just do it?
I don't know. That's probably a great question for Ms. Glover.
I think if they want to do it, they do it. I don't think that it's up to the Select Board at that point, but the State Gaming Commission has oversight.
I see.
So, they have to apply with the state.
So, right now, people, if they want to do a raffle, have to get our permission first. Is this override that, or is that in addition to?
This is in addition to.
Okay, so somebody still wants to run a raffle, let's say, you know, the fair, they still have to come before us?
Yes, although they don't have to. The law changed on that a couple of years ago.
Oh, so they don't have?
Not for the Lee Fair.
Oh, okay.
Unless they sell tickets for it in advance, and then they do.
Okay.
But if it's just a day of raffle, they don't need to come to the Select Board.
And I guess, Karen, so who gets the money? So, it's gambling, so the house always wins, so I assume the fair gets the money, or is it the nonprofit? Who gets all the cash?
And so, the nonprofit has to get a gambling, has to get a bingo license from the state, which is $25 a day, I believe.
Yep.
And then the nonprofit would get the money, and if it's approved, perhaps the Fair Committee could charge them use of the facility to run the bingo game or something like that, but as of now, this, the way it's set up, the 501, the nonprofit gets the money.
Okay, I would hope, I would hope that the Fair Committee has some kind of, I understand the reasoning why you want to have bingo, but I would hope the Fair Committee would get something out of this besides, you know, because they're gonna have to organize it, deal with anything in terms of trash, or setup, or whatever, so hopefully the Fair Committee can charge a fee for allowing the nonprofit to do this.
That will have to look into. I hope we can, but what we do get is we get the attendees there for our dinner, our fireworks. We get something to draw the people there, which is our goal.
Okay.
Because right now, we don't have anything to kind of bridge that gap in the afternoon.
All right.
So, that's our hope.
Will you bring my request to the Fair Committee to ask them to see if they can charge something?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Karen, this is Joff. We're a nonprofit. I'm happy to give a percentage back to the town, split it, I don't care. It's for the good of the community, and it's for the good of the fair, and you're 100% correct, it does bridge that gap, so if you want to have the Fair Committee talk to me, Maximum Velocity is happy to help you and the town with that.
Thank you. Yeah, we can talk offline at the fair meetings. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can, the Fair Committee can get money from the bingo, so we need to look into that.
Mr. Brown, comment?
Oh, good. Let me, let me just, my only question really is, how do you go about soliciting how many 501(c)(3)'s are out there that would like to participate, and then make a selection of who it is you're going to, you're going to elect, if you would, or choose? Are you just gonna call various 501(c)(3)'s? I mean, it's, you know, you're gonna have to make a decision over which one's gonna be the guru, so.
Right, well, I would assume that the Fair Committee would decide which one is the most beneficial to the community. Obviously, we'd pick an neighboring 501(c)(3) over, you know, a 501(c)(3) from four towns over. Whichever is the best beneficial to the community is who the, I would assume, the Fair Committee would choose. How we find somebody, between all the members on the Fair Committee, you know, there's, we're pretty well, you know, well, I don't know, know a lot about what goes around in, you know, different organizations around town. Word of mouth.
I would imagine, I would imagine there'd be several that would say, yes, we'd like to be involved with that, so you're gonna have to make a choice, or just gonna be one, or?
I, I don't know. I would, as, want only one voting member from the Fair Committee. Once you sit down, you go over all that's involved, it's not a simple task. You need a lot of people to run a bingo game, from my understanding. Um, that's something that the Fair, the first step is to get this voted in, the second step would be to try to commit, figure out how to do it. I honestly don't know.
Okay.
But those are great questions. Thank you.
Karen?
Yes?
Also, the IRS has a charitable part of their website where lists all the charities that are registered in the Town of Lee. That might be a place to start.
Oh, great. Thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yep.
This is a question of Town Administration. Do I have to move on this tonight?
No.
Okay. The reason why I'm not gonna move forward at this point is because I feel there's a lot of questions being answered, and I'd rather have all these questions answered on the floor, then we can go for a vote. It doesn't seem like the Select Board is against it, however, there's still a lot of outstanding questions, so if you can bring that back to the Fair Committee and gather the information, bring it to the next committee, I'm sure we can go for a vote.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next item of business, however, before I proceed, is Clay Lane Property for Material Storage. A Code Enforcement Officer would like to make a statement.
Thank you. Just want to give a history of the Clay Lane gravel pit project and how we got where we are tonight. The town acquired the property in the mid-1980s by tax speed, acknowledging that it was surrounded by other gravel pits. The, at that time, road agent conducted test pits on the property to see if it would be suitable for the future needs of the town for road sand and gravel. Test pitting in 1988 confirmed that it was. The town retained this property for all of these years for the future needs of the town. In the fall of 2018, it was determined that it was time to start the process of moving the material, as the sand that had been acquired from the previous town project on Old Mill Road was running out. Public Works Manager Steve Bullock and other town staff discussed this with the Select Board at three different public meetings. On January 14th, 2019, February 11th, 2019, October 21st, 2019, as well as a Conservation Commission meeting on or around February 4th, 2019. All of these meetings, excuse me, at several, if not all of these public meetings, neighboring residents were in attendance. At each of the Select Board meetings, the Select Board voted in favor of having town staff continue with the process. During the October 21st, 2019 Select Board meeting, the Select Board instructed town staff to obtain all approvals. We were advised at that time by town council that we had to only follow the state laws. We hired an engineering firm and had the plans drawn up under this guidance. We were originally scheduled to go before the Planning Board on March 19th, 2020, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, town staff decided it would not be fair for the residents to attend via a Zoom meeting, and felt it would be best until we waited until things got back to normal. In the meantime, we received all of the necessary permits for this project. When fall approached, we realized that Zoom would be the way we would be conducting meetings for the foreseeable future, and decided to proceed with the application. I noticed it for the Planning Board meeting of October 21st. Mid-morning, the day of the Planning Board meeting, we were advised by the town's legal council that we, in fact, have to follow the town's regulations, which are more restrictive than the state's. Not realizing how this would affect the project at such short notice, Steve Bullock requested continuance at the Planning Board meeting. This was done if any other cap, application would be required to do so. No reason was given, as it's not required, and the Board voted to continue it to the November 12th meeting. The intent of the November 12th meeting is to withdraw the application submitted to the Planning Board, not pursue the gravel pit until such time that the state law changes and/or the Planning Board amends the site review regulations, making it advantageous for all of the residents in Lee. The Planning Board has been working for several years to update the current site review regulations. This is a very time-consuming, grueling process. They have not gotten to the gravel excavation section. They have not discussed this section at all. Actually, unless any of the members follow the Facebook chat in the past ABC meeting or tonight's meeting, the Planning Board members have no idea about this topic of amending the regulations as it relates to the gravel pit. The only thing they know is what was said at the Planning Board meeting, which was what Mr. Bullock requested a continuance. All site review work sessions are public meetings, not open for the public comments, but are open for the public to attend. If and when the Board decides to amend the regulations, there'll be a formal public hearing for the regulation changes in their entirety for people to speak with their concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The Chair at this time takes privilege not to have public comment with respect to gravel pit operations in Clay Lane. All right, let's move forward at this time, Mr. Bullock, with respect to use of Clay Lane property for material storage.
Yeah, so we currently don't have any space to store road cuttings, ditchings, surplus materials, trees that we cut down off the side of the road, so logs, because all the property around our shop is in conservation easement, so this property would suffice for that, so we would cut the trees and use it to store shoulder cuttings, ditchings, and surplus materials that we dig off the side of the road. We used to give the dirt away to people, but with the way things are going in levels above us, giving away material is starting to get harder and harder and frowned upon, because we could destroy people's private property backing in to give it to them and things like that.
Anything else?
Huh?
What else?
We'd just be using it to store surplus materials, because we do not have any space currently, right now, to be able to do any of that.
And just tell me again, what kind of materials?
Shoulder cuttings and ditchings, so from drainage swales, and then when we use the grader to cut shoulders off the side of the road.
Comments from the Board? Mr. Bugby?
Oh, me first?
Yes.
Mr. Brown got angry at me, because I talked too much on the last one, so.
Right, Mr. Brown, your turn.
That's not accurate at all, but anyway, I will go ahead. No.
Okay.
Um, I honestly, I don't, I don't have any, any questions about it. I leave it up to Steve. He's, he's the guy that knows, this is not my, my bag at all, so.
Mr. Bugby?
I'm in favor of holding. Understand, in terms of kind of conversation with Karen about this whole process, I would think we should wait for the Planning Board to go through their regs, because right at the moment, it's 300 feet, which basically means that whole lot that we want to use for material is kind of like, not very usable, so I would like to wait. So, I would, I'm in favor of pulling the site review, but I'm not in favor of the last part.
But let me, excuse me, can I interject?
Please.
So, you're, we would, we're asking permission to withdraw the gravel pit request until such time that either the state law changes or the town regs change. We're not going to, we're not proposing to excavate any material, none.
I understand that. So, I'm in favor of that part, Karen, and I'm not in favor of starting to clear the trees and do a storage yard at this time.
Okay.
Is there a reason why?
Because I think you've got abutters that need to be part of the process, plus, if the Planning Board doesn't agree and wants to keep it at 300 feet, what are we gonna use that for? We're planning to use it to excavate material out, so we save money in terms of, you know, buying sand and gravel and stuff like that, so I would want to wait for the Planning Board to finish their deliberations and see what they say.
Excuse me, John, sorry to interrupt, but I would, I would especially like to endorse one thing Scott said, and that's listening or getting some public comment from the abutters. I received a couple of emails, I'm sure there are some other people on the screen that received some emails today. I see some flashes coming up on the screen from people, so I really do think we need to get the public comment out of the way and listen to it and see where we go from there.
So, can I speak to the process?
Please.
If, if the Select Board gives town staff approval to go forward with this, the Select Board will submit a letter to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board could choose or not choose to have a public hearing, and past, past practice would be that they will have a public hearing, and the public hearing will get input from all of the public, they could even offer to have a site walk, and then the Planning Board will issue, it's, because it's a municipal use of land, they will issue non-binding suggestions or recommendations to the town to follow. My guess, and I've worked with the Planning Board for a long time, they will have a public hearing, allowing all the abutters to speak, and they will have a site walk, allowing all the abutters to attend, if the Board allows town staff to pursue this opportunity.
Karen?
Yep.
Can you, can you speak to the, to the, not the setback, the buffer? Because I think a couple of things have been said tonight, and I'm not sure that there is such a thing as a 300-foot buffer rule.
There is no 300-foot buffer rule. It's, so if, and I don't want to confuse the topics, if we were to pursue a gravel pit, and we're not, the setback would be 200 feet from a disapproving abutter. If you were to pursue a storage yard, there is no required setback. Steve Bullock is giving, would like to propose a setback, but there is no required setback. It's 200 feet from a disapproving abutter, 10 feet from an approving abutter for a gravel pit. Does that clarify it?
I think so.
But again, this, we are not proposing a gravel pit.
Tonight?
Tonight. And the Planning Board has been working for several years on updating the site review regulations. I would like to say that they'll have them finished in a year or so, but I would not count on it.
I wouldn't count on that either, since I sit on the Planning Board.
Right, and it is a long, grueling process.
That is true. All right, let me parse this, so we can clear some of the air at this point. I move to authorize the Public Works Manager to withdraw the Clay Lane gravel pit site review application.
Second.
Remember, this is just withdrawing it, so there's no gravel pit. So, we do have a second. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Brown, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. Lacorice, yes. So, the application has been withdrawn. As Chairman, I feel there is controversy with respect to taking the trees out to, from the Clay Lane property. I think at this point here, we'll have to have the Planning Board involved to have a public hearing, so Karen, could you proceed with that?
Yes, so, but the, the formal way, it's my understanding from the municipal law, RSA, is that the Select Board will send a letter to the Planning Board saying that you're authorizing this use, and request them to have a public hearing.
Julie, can you do that, please?
Yes, but just understand that in order to request the public hearing of the Planning Board, you're in essence saying that we're moving forward with cutting down however many trees to create a laydown area.
That is correct, but Lisa starts the discussion, the opening at this time.
I'm not in favor of that, Mr. Lacorice. I'm not in favor of clearing the trees at this particular time.
Mr. Brown?
Well...
I'm looking for ways to get a formal discussion with the public and get involved, and put their, their opinions to the Board.
I agree with you, John, and also I will, I'll support that.
All right.
But, well, we, the Select Board itself could have a public hearing.
But I feel like this, being the Planning Board, which has really jurisdiction of the gravel pits in the Town of Lee.
Right, but we're in a...
We're not talking about gravel pit, you know, making gravel pit, but cutting up trees.
Right.
On the property, it could be a gravel pit somewhere down the road, I guess.
Well, really specifically, the thing that's triggering the 67454 statute is the use of the property as a storage area. There is no permission needed and no public hearings required, for example, if the Board allowed Mr. Bullock to have the trees cut down. So, what's triggering the request to the Planning Board for a public hearing would be the Board agreeing... would be the board agreeing that we're going to use the area for a storage area, which can't be accomplished without cutting trees down. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, yes. So, Mr. Brown, are you still in agreement to moving this to planning board?
I am.
I am as well. Mr. Bugby?
No, I'm not in favor of this. We started this whole thing because we wanted to get material out of it, gravel and sand, to save us about $1 million over the next X number of years. That's that's what precipitated this whole thing. And now we want to use it for something else, so. I'm not in favor of this at this time, Mr. LaCourse, so I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Thank you. Well, there's two votes for yes and one for no, so the motion carries to bring it to the planning board.
I believe you need a roll call vote, Mr. LaCourse.
Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourse, yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bugby for reminding me.
Excuse me, can I just speak for everybody who's listening in?
Please.
At the November 12th planning board meeting, Steve Bullock will make a formal request to withdraw the Clay Lane gravel pit application. I believe the letter will be received from the select board at that time, and it'll be read into the record, and the planning board will discuss and most likely set a meeting date for the public meeting for you all to attend for the storage yard.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate the comment.
Thanks.
Mr. Bullock, anything else you want to comment on?
Yeah, I'll bring up one thing that happened today that I need your permission for. During the wind, a tree over by the Mastway Field fell down, took out the fence, and crushed one of the dugouts. Destroyed it, so the dugout needs to get completely ripped out and replaced. But half the tree is still standing, and it's pretty rotten. It's on conservation land, and I'm going to need permission to cut it down. Because it will fall into the road and take out the power lines going into the transfer station.
Mr. Brown, comment?
No, I think that's what has to be done.
Mr. Bugby?
Nope, I'm agreement. Needs to come out. Can we deal with the dugout at some point in the future?
Right now, it's caution taped off, just because it happened today. Yeah, we're going to have to deal with it. I mean, it's half on the ground, half standing, so it's not safe. It's got to get ripped out and replaced.
All right. Can we task you with checking out what that takes and how much is that going to cost?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I also agree with the, with the select persons that it should be taken out, so go ahead, Steve, and do what you have to do.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need a vote or not?
No.
No? Okay.
Here we are. Thank you. Next order of business, Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
So the update on the leased office space. The letter from Mr. Daley's engineer went to DOT today. And in this letter, they are suggesting that I think it's four feet of pavement replaced on the, I was about to say the sunny side of the street. On the sunny side of Route 125, in order to create a passing lane and not putting in a left turn lane. The initial response that we got via email from DOT suggests that this is not going to be acted on quickly. So that's where that stands. We still have not sent to DOT the backup plan for Buzzalane. But we may need to do that in the next week or so. Because again, obviously, this involves paving, and we're just running out of weather in order to be able to get the paving done.
Any comments or questions about leased office space?
So Julie, is that going to cut into Sunny's parking lot? The four feet?
Uh, I don't believe so. And I don't believe so, but Karen might want to speak to that.
It will not. Adding a turn lane could, but the four feet will not. It comes close, but Jim Daley will have to replace the curbing along the parking spaces along 125 by Sunny's, but it does not interfere with their parking space.
I see. All right. I guess I would propose that we propose to those, the DOT, the Buzzalane solution we talked about at the previous meeting.
Yep.
So to move that forward, I don't necessarily want to, it sounds like it's going to take them a while. I don't want us to be sitting waiting for months and months and months to move, so. I'd like to propose to the other board members that we foot forward the Buzzle proposal to use Buzzalane instead of 125 at this particular time.
I fully agree with that. Let's see if we can get a one step forward, anyway.
I agree as well, so let's move forward on that. A temporary solution.
Okay.
Do you need a vote?
No.
Okay. I'm going to keep asking that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
That's okay. Keep us on our toes.
Any other questions regarding the leased office space?
Is everything else all set for you guys to move, or are you still waiting on anything else?
Everything that I believe needed to be done that we could do without us actually being in the building. So in other words, the IT and the telephones, in order to get those up and running, we need to be in the building.
All right.
Or at least our computers do.
I will share with the board the guilt I felt today when I went to the town hall to review the manifest, and those poor people that were out in the wind and the cold trying to get their town clerk office stuff done. So as soon as we can move over there, the better so, that people will have a better place to go and do their business with the town. It's just not good, so.
Okay. You may recall at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the deliberative session, and we may want to start thinking about ways to do it that don't involve getting 80 people in a confined space. HB 1129 was passed earlier in the pandemic. This was really, this language here that's highlighted was really specific to those towns that had not been able to get their town meetings in. It remains to be seen, of course, whether this authority will still be there next March and/or if some revised language might be adopted more specific to deliberative sessions. So obviously, I'll keep the board posted on what we might be able to do come February.
I think we should plan for it. I don't see much changes with respect to coronavirus, even though vaccines are supposed to be available. That's most predictions that at least for another, you know, half a year to a year, we're still pretty much going to be as we are now, hopefully no worse. So I think we should make preparations for the fact that we won't have a formal deliberative session. It'll be something more like a information transfer.
Yep. Okay.
Just like the Bubble Lane thing, I want to have preparation, just in case.
Right. The tax rate setting, DOT, ERA. ERA now has and has had for, at least since last week, all of the documents that they need in order to set the tax rate. So we are now just, and they did approve our MS-1, so that was good. So right now, we are just waiting on, geez, DRA, in order to set the tax rate. So as soon as I hear from them, I will let the board know, and will, I'm guessing, want to schedule a special meeting to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have a meeting with the ABC on the 10th, right?
Uh, yeah, um, well, no, no, that got switched to an ABC-only meeting.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. 17th then.
But we don't want to wait until the 17th.
No.
Yeah, but as I said, as soon as I, as soon as I know DRA is ready, I'll let you know.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Ms. Ross, are you still there?
Yes. Yes.
Can you do something about all the signs all over the roads when the presidential elections are over?
Absolutely.
And you have a time where you, what's the law with respect to that? Could you remind us?
So they have, and so the law is you have to have permission, even if it's in the state right of way, you have to have permission to put up a political sign. So I typically leave signs up unless I get a complaint. And then the law is if it's, if you have permission, you have, say, you have permission to put up a sign, you have until the second Friday following the election to get your sign down. But if you don't have permission, they're illegal anyway. So I could have them all picked up by the end of the day on Friday. Is that fair?
That's fair to me.
Okay.
Who do they get permission from?
They would have to get permission from DOT to put it in the states right of way. You have to have permission from the landowner. So, and the permission has to be given to me if requested in writing.
So at this point, we don't have requests, so we could legally take them out?
If I have, yeah, if you are requesting them, absolutely. After the election, I will take them down.
Is that okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Which Friday? This Friday or next Friday?
I can take down the illegal ones by the end of this week.
All right.
Let's do it.
I can't tomorrow, but.
No, not tomorrow. End of this week. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Town Administrator?
Uh, no, just other than to remind everybody, voting is at the Mastway School tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please wear a mask. And we're hoping to have, I know it's going to be busy, but I'm hoping that'll go as well as the primary did.
Thank you. Consent agenda, is anything the select board would like to remove?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing done. Your vote, Mr. Brown?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got lost there for a minute, guys. What's the vote?
We're asking about consent agenda. It's already been moved and seconded.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourse, yes. Motion carries. Thank you on that. Let's move to item eight. I move to enter into non-public session, New Hampshire RSA 91-8, colon, 328. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No. Mr. Bugby, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourse, yes. We'll move into non-public. Julie, take over. I move to seal the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on sealing?
No.
Mr. Brown, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourse, yes. Minutes are sealed. Item number nine, miscellaneous unfinished business. Who has comment?
I have a whole bunch of things, but if Mr. Brown has something he wants to talk about, I don't want to monopolize all the time.
Mr. Brown?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, you come up. You have the floor.
I have a question for the chief. There was a, there was an invoice, invoice, a bill for a coustress for fixing a fender on one of your vehicles. Could you tell me a little bit about that, chief?
Yeah, that happened back on August, I believe, the 4th. We had that big windstorm. And a tree had come down across Lee Hill Road, and Officer Doty, trying to be of assistance, thought he could push the tree out and open the road up with the push bumper on the cruiser. Tree popped up, came over, landed on the fender. Now, had it been any one of the other cars, I wouldn't have bothered to fix it, but it was our brand-new car.
Yeah.
So that's what that was.
So did you share with Officer Doty that his police car is not a bulldozer?
He knows that.
Okay.
We had that conversation.
All right. I have a few things from the THRC, so if you've got a few minutes. One of the things, the TRC has been meeting almost weekly or sometimes more. But one of the things they asked me to check to make sure the board is cognizant of the fact that this particular project involves the rehabilitation of the town hall, but it also includes other things, including expansion of the parking lot. It looks like we're going to have to move the well. And also, the topic came up in terms of sharing some of these expenses with the library, as well as the septic system. So I wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with that. I know the septic system and the renovation of the building is in our charge, but the other two things were going to be in the town center, you know, plan that was not voted in this last March. So I want to make sure, or they wanted to make sure that the board is cognizant of that as well. At the moment, we're looking at a parking lot expense of about $69,000. The septic system is going to be a little bit, about $39,000. And we're looking into the cost of the well at the moment. So I just wanted to be sure that the board is cognizant of that. If you don't want us to do that, need to let us know. The other thing, well, let me stop there.
Good.
Do I move on?
At that point.
Because there's an awful lot of information to unpack there, so.
Yeah, we got it. It's obvious that as you, as we try to rehabilitate existing town hall into a useful, you know, it's still a useful space, is a meeting space now, but it's not a great space, that's for sure, and it needs help. That these infrastructure improvements should be made, because I don't want to go back in the future or select people down the road dealing with a septic field or other infrastructure developments that was not done, because we didn't have the foresight when we had the opportunity to maybe propose these things. And since the library is in the middle of trying to do their expansion, which does require some infrastructure support, and then, of course, the existing town hall is adjacent to the library, I think it's prudent to have these under consideration.
All right.
That's my opinion. Mr. Brown?
Well, I have a, I have a couple of comments. Number one, okay, so this is a well and a septic system. But we still have some more buildings on the list to come, so we want to be sure that we accommodate that in the well and the septic system plans, don't we? I.e., the new town hall, if you would, is still on the table, as John puts it, so it's possible that we'll need something larger than just what we have with the library and the old town halls. But that's all I'm saying, and we have the parish house. We have all these other things that have to tap into a utility system, and we need to make sure we accommodate that.
Well, two things with that. The septic system, even when we did the previous proposal for this last March, there were two septic fields. Because they're too far apart. So even with that particular plan, there's going to be a septic system for the town hall and the library, and one for the municipal, new municipal complex that was proposed. So those are definitely two separate fields. They weren't the same field.
Okay.
In terms of well, there's still a possibility to use the same well. We just have to move it, because the current well, which is in back of the town annex, is too close to the proposed septic field, which is right kind of in front of the library. It would be underneath the parking lot. And it, we have to move the well out of the way. We even looked at, looking at leaving the well where it is and moving the septic system, but then you get into pumping affluent, and you don't want to do that. It's very expensive. And the maintenance in terms of years down the road is just, it's not, it's cost prohibitive. We decided that.
All I'm trying to say is, as we do these things, let's be sure we, we keep the vision of what's coming in the future, and we roll that into the plan.
Okay. The other thing that I spoke about is to share expenses with the library. Is that something that the board wants to explore? Do we want to just take it out of our particular, you know, expenses and not, you know, I don't want to say charge the library, because the library is the town. So I don't know how the board feels about that. Maybe that's something we can talk about in the future, but that's something that the committee has talked about as well, in terms of sharing these expenses, like the parking lot, the well and the septic system, because they're going to be using those utilities, just like the town hall is.
Again, I feel that's prudent in the sense that, you know, it's connected, both using the infrastructure support, and they should be involved in the overall discussion and cost as well.
All right. The next thing is in terms of the process, this whole process. We did get, which I shared with you the last time, a quote from W, what is it, Wonderlic Malic Engineers. And what the committee would like to do, one, there's deliverables that are required for the delivery session, and there's requirements for the L-CHIP application. We've kind of split those in two. For the delivery session, we're going to need about $2,000 to get some drawings out of Wonderlic Malic for the exterior elevations. The rest of the information we believe that we need for the delivery session is things that we can generate internally. We've got all the information in terms of costs for things like the septic system, which I just shared with you in the parking lot, from the previous study that we had done. And we're also using a 15% escalator, so whatever the cost was back then, we've added 15% on, just so that we're comfortable. just so that we're comfortable with all the prices, because they're very expensive these days for materials. So I'm requesting some money from the board for that particular study to engage Wonder Lake Malick. And for L-Chip, we're going to need, and as we get closer to what we need for L-Chip, we're going to engage that same company, but I don't have a proposal for those particular services yet. It will not be full scale drawings. It'll be mostly in terms of costing out something so we can get quotes. L-Chip is going to require us multiple quotes. But it's not going to require design drawings, mechanical drawings, electrical drawings and things like that. So that will come later on. So those are the two things we're looking at at the moment.
So the $2,000, what fund do you think that's coming from?
I thought you were rich, John. Weren't you going to pay for that? I'm proposing it comes out of, we've got two possibilities. We've got the town buildings fund and we also have the town hall renovation capital reserve fund. Either one of those two, would it be appropriate? Probably the, more the, the latter than the previous.
Mr. Brown? Comment?
No, we need to do it. We need to do it.
Julie?
Yes?
So the town hall funds, how much is in there? There was a.
$50,000 plus whatever interest.
And the town hall renovation has a little over $51,000. The other one has 220 some odd thousand, something like that.
Well, since it's a town hall renovation activity, it should come out of town hall renovation fund.
That will be fine.
All right. I have no problem on that. So I move to allow $2,000 be paid to.
Wonder Lake Malick Engineering?
For preliminary plans for the existing town hall.
Yeah, there's external elevations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? And that should come out of town hall renovation fund. Mr. Brown, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. La Course, yes. Motion carries.
The last thing on my list is something that I guess, either I was having a senior moment and it happened and nobody else remembers it, but maybe the two of you can remember. I came to the board when the Town Center Vision Committee was requesting in terms of having meetings at the public safety complex in the future. It was my understanding that the board said that in 10 to 15 years, the Town Center Vision Committee should be planning on having no meetings at the public safety facility because it was going to be used for fire and police services at that time. So that's how we were planning in terms of, you know, renovating the town hall. So we're trying to work up that particular, what, what happened and when. And Mary Woodward was tasked with that and she contacted the town administrator and she and the other department heads don't remember any of that. So I don't know if you guys remember. I looked in the minutes and I couldn't find anything. So I'm not sure how to proceed. So I don't know if you guys remember that. Are you in agreement with that? I, I guess I'm at a loss for words.
So, sorry, let me just interject. We have discussed it.
Yes.
As I think I told Mary Woodward, we've discussed it, but the board, I don't recall the board ever taking a vote. Plus, it wouldn't be binding anyway.
I don't, the board never took any formal vote, but it was discussed about the fact that somewhere in the future, the, you know, the public safety complex would be fully consumed by safety personnel. And maybe we had discussion on that and we're looking for opportunities or, you know, as we're talking about, you know, expanding the campus of the governance of the town, that, you know, the existing town hall would be a meeting place. And so that was the formal discussion, but there was never any formal vote at the time.
All right. Because the, the things we're trying to anticipate, like we did last time, is what will people come up with and what will they, you know, ask questions about? And one of the things we're already getting is, why do you even want to renovate this for a meeting space? You've got all that meeting space at the public safety facility. Why do you need even more meeting space? So that's what we're trying to answer in terms of people's queries. And I remember we had the conversation, so we were going to use that, but then we didn't have any documentation that we actually had the conversation, so.
Well, also, it's, it's more than just the calling the, you know, the existing town hall a meeting space. It, it has a function. But we want to renovate it anyways, because it is a historical building and it has merit. So while you're going to do the renovation, it also provides it having a purpose. Instead of saying, we're going to renovate existing town halls, yeah, for what purpose? Well, obviously, it's still going to be a meeting space. So it's more for functionality, I think.
Well, that's, that's interesting, John, you bring that up, because that's one of the questions that we have as well. We keep calling it a meeting space, but if we called it a function place, that might be, you know, a better term for it.
Yes.
They're going to have meetings there, of course, but they want to also have functions, like dances and whatever else there, so.
It's almost like a community center, isn't it?
Yeah, but we, we didn't want to cross that line.
I don't think you do either, but.
Community kind of is something totally different.
Yeah, bingo.
Yes, and lucky seven tickets or whatever those are, so. The other thing, the other thing I just, the other thing I just want to bring the board up, there's a few things that we're exploring in terms of right of ways in ADA. Right at the moment, just as you start, as you walk out of the front vestibule of the town hall, the one that's blocked off, you're in the states right of way. One of the things we've explored is there's a person at the state DOT that deals with these particular kind of issues. Because one of the things we're going to need is we're going to need two exits from that particular structure now that it's a meeting space or a proposed meeting space or function space. So the one toward the back, that's something we can work on, but the one toward the front, you can't give it an ADA exit with almost no space to make those particular ramps and stuff. So one of the things we're going to do is explore with the state what is possible out in that right of way and what isn't. That's what we're working on. The second thing we're going to work on is an ADA issue with the second floor. There's certain things you can do and certain things you can't do. So we're going to explore that, because at the moment there's no public space upstairs, because there's no elevators, there's no way for somebody that has a disability or something or a challenge to get up there. So that's something else we're looking at. But as we make progress with all these particular issues, I'll bring those things back to the board and make sure that we're down the right track. One of the other things we talked about is having me do these presentations to you, just to make sure that you both are on the same page that we are. So we don't go off on a diversion tangent and you say, well, we're not doing that, we're not doing that. We don't have time to waste our time. So hopefully every two weeks, we have these discussions in terms of what we talked about, so.
I appreciate that, Scott. Any questions with Scott on these issues? Any other miscellaneous materials?
No.
Okay, I move to a turn. For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all your input.